And everybody, I'd like to call this Sylvania City Council meeting for April 7th, 2025 to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hansen?
Here.
Mr. Hanen?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Mr. Richardson is excused.
Ms. Stowe?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Six members of Sylvania City Council are present, so a quorum does exist. If you would all rise and recite the pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Stowe this evening, since Mr. Richardson is not here.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you very much. We have nothing, no additions to the agenda. Mrs. Westfall?
Nothing. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Members of city council, hearing none. Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Pillar?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shaw?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schreier is excused, seeking an engagement. Ms. Briney?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the council agenda as submitted.
So moved second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the council agenda meetings as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. And this evening, agenda item number five is a presentation for the 2025 citizens for the Metro Parks Campaign. This evening, pardon? Oh, sorry. My apologies. I gotta do the minutes first. Hold on, Matt.
(laughing)
So, Mrs. Westfall, we have the meeting minutes from March 17th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the Sylvania City Council meeting minutes from March 17th, 2025 as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes of the council meeting from March 17th, 2025 as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now we have the Metro Parks Campaign. I was so excited to hear the presentation and what Metro Parks is doing right now that I skipped right past the meeting minutes.
Well, those three seconds were gonna be...
The highlight of the time.
(laughing) (inaudible) Had some AV issues which were still in our end, so thank you for bearing with me. As opposed to looking at our beautiful images of Lucas County Metro Parks, you'll have to be looking at myself. So I want to tell you that it's not my parents' fault.
We were incredibly close to power lines.
(laughing)
In our household.
I get the opportunity to speak in front of you annually. I do have an ask, or hope, I should say, for support. I do want to pick up a little bit where we left off. This is just a reminder that the Lucas County Metro Parks is countywide, about nineteen parks, and just importantly, we've got a park within five miles of every Lucas County resident. So that stretches from Grand Rapids, Ohio, all the way out to Jerusalem Township. And we have just under seven million visits annually, so that's to accounting of about four hundred twenty thousand people. In 2019, we've got information that we had five and a half million visits. As the marketing communications person, I was over the moon about that, COVID created more park users, and we've been able to hold on to them as hopefully lifetime park participants. We do a lot of really exceptional things, but we actually do two things. One is take care of globally significant ecological space in Northwest Ohio, and we connect people to it. We're gonna talk about some sexy things here, but underneath those two things, that's what we get out of that every day to do, take care of green space and make sure people have access to it and have lifelong memories. Everything we do is to make your water drinkable and your air breathable, and we are the number one park system in the United States today. That's not said by us. We found out that we were amongst four finalists in 2020. The National Park and Recreation Association has a gold medal. That is their gold standard. That is our Heisman Trophy. That is our Oscars. You can only apply for it every five years, so we have just applied for it again, and we'll find out at the end of the month if we're amongst the final four. In 2020, it was us, Dallas, Texas, Mesa, Arizona, and Baton Rouge. Just comparatively, to provide some context to it, our annual budget at that time was sixteen million dollars. Dallas' was sixty million. Now sixteen million dollars is a lot of money, but Dallas, Texas, sixty million dollars, Mesa, Arizona, this was forty. We are certainly punching above our weight on your behalf, and we're proud to do it. So being the best park system in the United States, we've also learned an important lesson. People don't learn by having their hands slapped or being told what they should be doing. They learn from experiences, right? So we have created experiences for generations to enjoy. One thing that assures us is that being the best right now isn't just for today, it's for the next generation of kids to play in and making sure that green spaces for them. We have a host of amenities that we've added parkwide. We have the Treehouse Village in Swanton. We have upgrades to every one of our parks. Again, that's within five miles of every one of your doorsteps. We have the Downtown Project, which we're really excited about. That's seen one million visitors in about a year and some change opening up. A million visitors to the downtown area that used to be all industrial legacy, and no one has had places to recreate down there. So we've opened that up, and we've been blown away with the amount of return we see in that investment. We heard that it was true, right, based on comparative studies, that if you put a dollar in public space on the riverfront, you would see a seven to twenty dollar return, and we've seen just that. There's been four hundred billion dollars worth of economic impact around what will be the Riverwalk. We're only halfway through, so the bodies are there and the investment is there, just as proven true throughout the country. Last but not least, we swing all the way out into the east side. If you're not a birder yet, you will be. You'll be getting your white new balance in the mail, I promise you, and you'll be getting a lot of cackeep. Items. It's something that appears to be distributed later as you look for hobbies. We built Howard Marsh. Candidly, it was an onion farm, and now it is a globally significant place for birders to come and recreate and shorebirds. So that is who we are. Frequently, I think our region laments about who we are not. Well, who we are is the best park system and the best operator of green space in the United States, and your park system is a kissing cousin to that. You do a lot of great things as well. I'm here on behalf of the Metro Parks to ask for your endorsement or support for operating levy. It's 1.4 mils. That money was originally brought on in 2007. It was renewed in 2017. So this is our grocery money. It is independent from the Downtown Project. This is the money that we use to make sure that everyone gets a clean, safe, and natural experience to the standards that you come to expect and the best standards again in the United States. We've seen a 62% increase in Lucas County resident usage since 2017, so we have certainly been a victim of our own great work. We're excited about that. We've seen a 48% increase of usage outside of Lucas County. So if you build it, they will come. It's from a movie. That's almost never true. But if you build it based on what people say they want and invite them over and over and over again, they will come, and people are coming in droves to our region and to your Metro Park system, and we're proud of that. So again, we're asking to replace the monies from 2007, so changing out 2007 property values to the modern return, and that money immediately goes into your trails, into your bathrooms, into plantations, and kids camps, and things of that variety. So you can imagine all of that with the backdrop of beautiful images. Not someone dressed like an eighth grade biology teacher, but this is the only dress clothes I own. I spend most of my time housing in space. So I wanted to stop and answer any questions you may have about how we're operating currently. What our ask entails, again, we're asking for about a dollar sixty increase monthly for every one hundred thousand dollar home. So it's not nothing, right? It is certainly challenging times for any number of reasons, but we think this is the best bang for your buck. It's certainly one of, I promised you last year, and we were there prior, we would continue to look for state and federal dollars. Since 2017, we've brought in over a hundred million dollars worth of state and federal money. It's not just because our products are great together, right? It's because we're able to marry...
Our projects to what any political party is interested in, and largely that is putting people to work and, again, changing out the infrastructure that needs and changing out and connecting people to things that are so desperately important.
Thanks, Matt. I appreciate the update. And so you're looking for a replacement for the 2007 1.4 mil levy, which basically updates the value of the property. So if my home was worth two hundred thousand dollars in 2007, now it's worth three hundred thousand dollars. Using that as a hypothetical, it's probably more than that, but just for argument's sake.
I've seen your home. That's probably generous.
It's more than I know.
Yep.
(laughing) And that ignores the changes I've made to the house. So, but in this particular regard, if it went from two hundred to three hundred, that adjustment would be the dollar and sixty cents a month, correct?
That's right.
If, based on the fact that it's a replacement?
Yes, sir. On average, I think that this is going to be, on average, about forty-nine dollars in total for the entire year. So again, it's a bit of a sliding scale, and it's a difficult thing to pin down, but that, on average, is about a buck sixty a month in the range of about fifty dollars or under fifty dollars for the...
For a hundred thousand dollar value home?
That's exactly right. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's exactly right. So to your question, if it's three hundred thousand dollar home, that'd be three times that amount.
All right. So...
Go ahead, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Hannah.
Are you aware of what's going on in the Ohio Legislature on...
(inaudible)
Yes. So one of the...
The things to speak candidly about is we had a difficult proposition on our hands. There's a House bill that looks like it will pass...
In June or July, the summer, that would not allow or disallow the usage of the term "replacement." So candidly, on a personal and professional level, as somebody who spoke to tens of thousands of people when we were talking about the possibilities of the Downtown Project, we promised we would never ask for new money again. So we'd be straight replacement or straight renewal for the next fifteen years. The only reason it stops at fifteen is because that's how long our financial plan goes out to. And it's a financial plan that talks about the operations and not just our parks, but when our Jeeps time out. So our challenge was, do we go back on that promise, or if we carry forward and pass in a larger electorate, if you will? Well, it looked like somehow we've gotten over our skis downtown, and we promised we'd figure out how to operate that and not ask for more money. Despite all the challenges that we've all experienced in our homes, from inflation to any number of other things, gifts promised to the Metro Parks and then having to be rescinded, that is the weight of the world, we've stayed on task. We've stayed on the project, and the Downtown Project is not only performing as we'd expected, but we will be delivering it in the time that we expected. So to your question, that was our challenge. Is replacement more money? It is more money. It isn't new money, and I realize that that's a bit of a needle to thread, but that nonetheless was our promise. This is monies from 2007. This is our grocery money. This isn't money to build something downtown or near the place. This is how we make sure the bathrooms that you enter are to the maintenance level that you deserve, candidly, and our trails are the best in the country. So that is the House bill that we thought might pass. Now it looks like it will pass, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here today.
So you're replacing, you can't do a replacement?
I can do a replacement in May. I don't know that I'll be able to do it afterwards, sir.
Okay. Is this a May vote?
That's correct. Yep. Early voting starts tomorrow, and the...
(inaudible) Okay. Yeah, I think you're good for me.
Well, it's not an easy time to do anything, right?
I'm looking at one. I'm working on one in November, and we pretty much decided we're gonna ask for new money.
What's hard for you guys to know that I don't, I've just met Doug for the first time. We're not in cahoots. It's, again, we do swing sets and we plant trees. This is as candid as any institution you'll find. Your dollars don't go to our Porsches. They go into kids' camps, and we promised Downtown we would not only build it with half taxpayers' money and earn the rest, and we're on path to do just that, despite everything that everyone else has experienced as a challenge. So we do what we say we're going to do and just that. So that is why we're here today. That's why we're on in May. We're not afraid to stand alone on the electorate. I think there's a mayoral primary, but it's just us in that. But we're accountable to you. This isn't the first time you've seen me in your chambers, and it certainly won't be the last, despite probably most of your wishes. You know, I work for you, as do the 225 people who work for the Metro Parks, and they're the best at it. And a lot of that's due to your wonderful support. So we just want to keep it up.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Matt, I love the Metro Parks. I've spent a ton of time in them, and when I think of Metro Parks in our neck of the woods, I think of Wildwood.
Yes.
I don't think Botanical Gardens is Metro Park.
It is. Yeah.
That's what I wanted to ask.
I get a lot of ribbing because when it was assimilated, I came along with it.
Oh.
The joke is that they got sixty-six acres. They got stuck with me and some toner.
(laughing)
So the Botanical Garden is one of ours. I reluctantly can say that it is in a much better place now, because I thought we were doing a pretty good job when I got to spend two years there. But the reality is that our attendance has almost doubled. The accession plants are being taken care of in a better, more organized way, and we're able to actually work more efficiently, right? I mean, Sylvania is known for being fiscally responsible, and having the capacity that Metro Parks does makes that work easier, and we're able to share, you know, services. So I'm excited to say, it had nothing to do with my coming over. The toner was helpful. The Botanical Garden is a great space. Wildwood is still one or two in terms of the most used parks. It's the one I grew up in. Candidly, my grandparents built their home in the 50s right behind it, so kilns have been breaking into Wildwood for a very long time. And again, this levy is for all of them, right? This has nothing to do with the Downtown, although it is part of the best system in the country. This gets us from Providence to Jerusalem Township, and I drive it pretty regularly, so I can tell you that your money goes into that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for enjoying it.
Other questions from members of council?
Matt, you know, we're all politicians up here, and the reason you have our support is because our constituents like you. And so, you know, the good job you do really does translate into support for you. We appreciate that.
But I'm lucky to be able to represent better people's work, so thank you for saying that. Got some great parks in Sylvania.
Other questions from members of council? So Matt, your ask is...
For your endorsement.
And we've got a historic policy attached to this. Mrs. Westfall, I don't recall the specifics of it. Maybe Ms. Briney, you recall?
I was gonna ask you that.
We, I don't have the legislation prepared tonight, but if you wanted to do, it was... We've got enough time. It's just thirty days. We have the financial information, or if you have your financial information.
Sure.
If you could just email it to my mom, then she can get it out to everybody. And then if there are no questions and no issues, which I know, I believe we endorsed the last one, so I don't think that's, or maybe it was just an update that you were providing last time.
Thanks for listening to the whole thing last time.
(laughing)
Sure.
So if you want to just authorize legislation to be prepared for the next meeting, that will be in time before the...
Sure. Wonderful. Yeah.
There's nothing in our legislation that specifies under what circumstances we should advance approval on endorsing a levy?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
It just requires some information to be provided, so once we get the financial information, that's the part where we don't have.
Matt, just so you know, we adopted a policy a few years requiring, before we would endorse a levy.
Yeah.
We needed to have financial...
Of course.
Well, you, of course, but you can't imagine how many times folks showed up without that. And so we did adopt the policy, and we've observed it. We're treating you like we treat everybody else.
And I would expect nothing else. Yeah.
We don't need to be burdensome.
No, sir.
It's important that we fulfill that obligation to our community as we evaluate these things. I was aware of this, and I thought it was announced, and for sure. I absolutely...
So I'd like to, oh...
I do that. Hold up. Let's keep it real short. What's the backup plan if it doesn't go through, if you don't give the...
Well, it's an operating levy, right? So it will come, it will be, it will revisit. It will be under...
Under a new moniker. It will be called, presumably. So it will just be authorized by the mayor. It is, again, is in project specific. This is our operating money for countywide, so. I assume then we would see you in November with a more robust campaign.
What's that?
I said I would expect that. We would then see you in November with a more robust campaign.
Yeah, this campaign is...
Like our others, right? We sort of beat the drum and make it accountable to all the partners and all the municipalities who work on this, so.
Yeah. They're all fairly similar.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to advance, move to advance legislation to endorse the Metro Parks levy contingent, and of course, the receiving of all the financial and other data required.
Second. We have a motion in a second to basically move for the consideration of an endorsement for the Metro Parks levy coming up at the May primary. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, and the information and endorsement will be on the agenda for the next meeting in April.
Yes, sir.
You're welcome to come, but you don't have to.
Message received. Thank you for your time. I know it's a busy agenda.
I agree. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number six. Mr. Shaw, ordinance number 46, 2025.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of council. I have a bid award request for you tonight for three of our locations, two water facilities of ours, and one sanitary sewer pumping station. We received three bids on March 18th.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We've got the three-year collective bargaining.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. I missed a minute, so you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Apparently you and I are missing things today.
All right, yes, we did. We had...
We'll get right to you.
Leslie, do you want to speak about the collective bargaining? You want me to, or...
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay. Yeah, so we, this is our last one on the police side. We are here with our clerks, our clerk one and clerk two positions. This here is entering to, I think, in the ordinance. I'm reading a four-year, this is a three-year collective bargaining agreement like the rest of ours. The wage increases, which I'm sure everybody's kind of looking at, is the same as what three, two, and the police positions. So it's a four percent, four percent, four percent. Negotiations went really good. We got them done in one day, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you may have on our clerks' positions.
Mr. Shaw, is this retroactive, I presume?
Yes.
January?
That's correct.
I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
This is in line with our budget estimates.
That's right. Correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Shaw regarding ordinance number 46? Hearing none. We have ordinance 46, 2025. Mr. McCann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only...
Ordinance number...
I'm sorry. The ordinance number? Forty-six.
Forty-six dash 2025. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance on behalf of the city of Sylvania to enter into a three-year collective bargaining agreement commencing January 1st, 2025. With the Fraternal Order of Police of Ohio Labor Council, on behalf of Sylvania Police Clerks, I move for passage of ordinance number 46 dash 2025 as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 46, 2025 as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. An ordinance 46, 2025 is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number seven. Now we're up to the roof.
I was so excited to talk about roofs. You have no idea. So, yeah.
It's a little bit of stuff.
My apologies to chief and overlooking that, so, yeah. Up to our roofs, we have three locations, our water meters building on Maplewood Avenue, our Monroe sanitary sewer pumping station, and our water pumping station on Main Street, but more appropriately on Brent Road. So we took three bids on March 18th, 2025. Our apparent low bidder was Freedom Roofing Windows and Siding. They're out of Woodville, Ohio, and their bid was sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, which was about 15% under our estimate. Just to give you an example, our second lowest bid was from Overhead Roofing and Sheet Metal out of Toledo. Their bid was seventy-four thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars, so eight and a half percent underestimates. So we got good numbers. We are not in the roofing business a tremendous amount, so we did our reference checks and due diligence to see what type of outfit we were dealing with, and the results of that were not only good, but they were great. Everybody that we had talked to was really excited about this company, did a great job for them. They have done municipal work before. See, Perry burg is used in, I believe, on the court, if I remember correctly, but all the references checked out great on this particular outfit. So we did have these in our budget for 2025, being that we have two locations out of the 701 water account. We are requesting a fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollar allocation from the water fund and fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars from the 702 sanitary sewer account to cover the Monroe Street locations. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Shaw, I'm not sure that everybody, particularly for the people in the audience online or whatever, know what EPDM roofing system is, so give us a thirty-second summary of what that is.
So like, you know, City Hall is asphalt roofs. Your home most likely is an asphalt roof with shingles on them. EPMD roofs are more flat, so your flat roofing systems, they have rubber membranes with a decking system that's underneath them, a lot of flashing that goes up around the corners. Honestly, because they're flat, they take, you know, a little more care and actually people that know what they're doing than the normal, you know, five and twelve slope roofs are. So just a rubber roofing type system is the easy plain Jane, you know, type description of that.
Any other questions for Mr. Shaw? Hearing none. We have ordinance number 47, 2025. Ms. Stowe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce ordinance number 47, 2025, and read by title or name. Accepting the bid of Freedom Roofing Windows and Siding LLC awarding the contract for the pumping station roof replacements to same, authorizing the expenditure for the improvements in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, appropriating funds therefore, I move for ordinance number 47 dash 2025 to, we move for passage as, final passage as an emergency measure. Thank you.
Motion in a second to approve ordinance number 47, 2025 as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. An ordinance 47, 2025, it's approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number nine, we have the, or excuse me, agenda item number eight. We have the Eldon Ditch watershed improvements. Mr. Headed, you made a specific request to speak briefly about this particular item, so please come up. Obviously, I know who you are, but for the record, you need to state your name. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Anthony Headed, 5819 Brainerd Drive, Sylvania, Ohio. Tonight, you are being asked to vote on whether to move forward with the jurisdictional determination from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regarding Eldon Ditch. While this may seem like a procedural step, it represents a critical moment. Once initiated, this process begins to formalize a project that still lacks a clear publicly communicated purpose. To date, no clear long-term plan has been shared with the public. There's no transparent vision outlining what the project is ultimately meant to accomplish. Justification for this project relies on an outdated historical timeline, including flood data and planning assumptions that no longer reflect current conditions or community priorities. Moving forward based on this outdated information risks unnecessary disturbance and expense. The project has already impacted areas of significance, like the Memorial Grove, a place of deep historical and emotional significance to the community, without meaningful input from the public. I want to focus in on the Memorial Grove for a moment. Trees planted in honor of our fallen soldiers, living tributes to their sacrifice, were cut down despite verbal assurances that they would be preserved. Memorial markers were removed and never replaced. Field dirt was added around the roots of surviving trees, placing their long-term health at serious risk. And the most heartbreaking of all, several additional memorial markers were violently torn from the ground by heavy machinery. These markers, symbols of remembrance and honor, were not handled with care. Instead, they were left damaged, tossed aside in a puddle, standing crooked, and forgotten for an extended period. This was not just a mistake. It was a moment of profound disrespect. If this project's necessity is still in question, if we are still unsure what the end goal truly is, then why continue down this path? Requesting a jurisdictional determination is not neutral. It signals intent, and it puts us further down a road that may not serve the best interests of the community environmentally, financially, or historically. I respectfully ask that you pause. you pause, delay this vote. Let's step back and define the project's purpose, its cost-benefit to the public, and whether it aligns with Slovenia's values. Only then should we consider advancing further steps. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Headed?
Mr. Headed, I'd like to just have a perspective. I appreciate your passion and your interest in making sure that we're being good stewards of this responsibility. I believe you've already had a conversation with Mr. Shaw at one point or another. I do think that there have been some critical conversations with the neighbors who are impacted by that area. So, to say that we've not been transparent is a bit of a stretch. But I'd like to have a little bit of background on your expertise in this area that's helping you to be so knowledgeable so that we can understand your professional perspective and your credentials that have allowed you to come up and share this important information.
Sure. I don't think anything that I've mentioned here is specific to any engineering determination or anything along those lines. It's more based on general information. I have requested publicly available documentation that, you know, states basically all of this. The interactions with Mr. Shaw. I've spoken with Mr. Hanson at length about the project as well, and I've also done my own research. So, I believe everything that I've mentioned is sound. I also have years' worth of pictures as well that I can bring to the table as well if needed. So, if anybody would like to see those, I'd be happy to share.
Anthony, I'll just note that I've been, we've been talking about Eldon Ditch since, as far as I can tell, at least September of twenty-twenty. And probably before that, we've had multiple meetings about it. We had good, sound engineering studies done on the, supporting this project. The fact that you don't like it isn't very impressive to me. I don't know what your engineering credentials are. And the fact is, is that the record has been very clear and very transparent in support of this project. And, yeah, and as far as I know, the neighbors in and around the area that's the focus of the project are very supportive of this project and addressing the severe water, surface water flow issues that we have in that area. So, I hear what you say, but I don't see any support for what you're saying. And you certainly haven't put forth any here tonight.
Questions, no other questions for Mr. Headed?
Mr. Headed, what would your solution be other than to say stop?
I don't think I can state that, you know, with what Mrs. Westfall stated. I'm not an engineer, so I don't know the best path, best path to move forward. But I do feel like removing a ditch is an outdated practice, and I don't believe that that's the only possible resolution here.
Our engineering firm, Fishback, concluded differently. You understand that?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And just for clarification, I know that you've read this. What we're asking for is for them to assemble additional data. My understanding, Mr. Shaw, if I'm incorrect, submit that to the Army Corps of Engineers to make sure that we're headed down the right path. Am I not correct with that? So, basically, we're asking for, for all intents and purposes, a second opinion from what, at least I would consider a world-class entity and knowledge in this particular area. So, asking us to pause what we're basically saying, hey, we want to make sure that we're doing this the right way, that seems a little counterintuitive for the concerns that you have getting a second, because it sounds to me like you're saying, pause, let's get more information, let's get a second opinion, and that's what we're looking at this evening.
Understood. And I think that, you know, the jurisdictional determination is going to determine if the ditch is U.S. water. So, the reason why I'm here tonight is because if there's an alternative solution to removing the ditch, then that would basically be wasted taxpayer dollars to move forward with that determination.
Well, we thank you for your opinion.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for the time.
Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, in front of you is a contract modification request for Eldon Ditch Phase Three. That's really phases two and three, but first, Phase Three is the contract. You know, stepping back, I know Mr. Murphy is new. He probably hasn't seen much of this. Maybe some of the other ones have, you know, strangers been here quite some times. He's been with us the whole way, but, you know, we, we, this was brought to me back in two thousand and fifteen with Mrs. Stiff, who's adjacent to Veterans Memorial Field. And she had gotten hold of at that time, Councilman Capellini, to investigate ways to improve this watershed. She was getting flooded out, like the nth degree in her backyard adjacent to the wall. So, that's what kicked this stone going, and I'll say a fourth time. This has been in front of council in nineteen sixty-five, nineteen seventy-six, nineteen eighty-five, and for three times it's been punted. So, this has a historical body in front of this group to do something over here. I'm number four. I'm going to do something. I was tasked to do something to review this. We have studied it. We've come up, our consultant has come up with ways to address this, and that's what I was tasked to do, and that's what I'm doing. So, this is project two and three of four that came out of the study that we did. So, that's the kind of historical thing. This has been punted several times.
It's been initiated by our neighbors.
Exactly.
Who'd want relief for this.
So, so that's kind of the background on how we got to this point. But we've started to study it. I've had, in my time here since two thousand and fifteen, I've had five or six drainage complaints over the years. Most of that in between two thousand and fifteen and twenty-one. That was a historically wet period in Slovenia. We were getting an awful lot of rain during that time. We had flooding in Alexis Road area. Been relatively dry for a few years, so some of these complaints have gone away in recent years. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it's not functioning properly, but that we still don't need to look at it. But that's the historical background. So, specific to the task that's in front of you tonight, we are asking to do a jurisdictional determination, as Mr. Headed alluded to. So, what we did when we scoped this project out with Fishback, we said, hey, give us a recommendation, an engineering recommendation on what you think is going to happen with this. Is this a surface water mistake? Do we need to go in front of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers? What is it that we need to do? They did a preliminary look at all of the data and said, Mr. Shaw, I don't think so. I think we're going to be just. Okay, scope the project. We do the engineering work. Deputy Director and myself have had a lot of discussions about it. Let's make sure we're dotting our i's. Let's make sure we're crossing our t's. Let's officially reach out to them and get their determination on what they want to see. So, in November last year, we submitted some preliminary plans to them. They'd taken a look at them. And basically, they came back to us and they said, Mr. Shaw, what you've given us isn't enough. Like, you need to do a jurisdictional determination, and here's what needs to be involved in that.
When was it in November?
Yes. Yep.
And this is the Army Corps of Engineers, you're right.
Right, right. So, this is who we're talking with. They said, this is what you got to do. So, we reached back out to Fishback and said, hey, this is the process that we need to go through. Give us a change in modification to do the scope on this project, to look at this specific piece. And they said, no problem. So, that's what's in front of you tonight. That's the forty-three hundred dollars and seventy-eight cents. So, when they do that, they're going to take a look at a couple of different things. They're going to try to establish an ordinary high watermark. They're going to look for evidence of wetlands. There's a lot of things that go into that determination. They put together a document, and then they ship it to the Army Corps of Engineers. And then they officially have information that's pertinent to them to take a look at. They could come back with a couple of different things. They could come back to us and say, yes, you may. And at that point, us as a group have to decide what it is that we want to do. Mr. Headed, you know, talked about a cost-benefit. There certainly is that there. You know, how much are we willing to spend to do that? They could come back and say, no, you're not doing anything at all. And at that point, we have a pretty clear direction on how we want to proceed with the project. But it's a pretty key point. Let's make sure we figure this step of it out. We'll come back to you after this process is done and give you a report on what we find. And then we'll decide as a group on how to go.
I have a little professional interest, professional understanding about wetlands, waters of the United States, these sorts of things. And I guess it wouldn't surprise you to know that this area of regulatory law is in the process of changing right now with proposals from the Trump administration to turn to prove Biden era water issues, water of the United States determination. So, we see what, we'll see what comes out. But things are, things are changing probably in favor of determination. It's not a water of the United States, but you never know.
Right. But it's definitely a process to make sure we hit, right? And certainly one that we're willing to put our foot forward and say, yeah, let's make sure that we're on point with this.
And that is the right, this is the right path. I mean, as a lawyer who's practicing the area, this is the, this is the right path. I'm confident in that.
So, Mr. Shaw, just for clarification, if this is approved by council this evening, Fishback does this study, they send the, they send the information to us and the Army Corps of Engineers, what do you anticipate? Do you have a sense of the turnaround? Should we hear back this year? Or, I mean, this is the, you know, this is the Army Corps of Engineers, but it's also the federal government. So, you know, is it, you know, six months? Is it a year? Is it a year and six months? What are we looking at here?
I would say less than a year, but what I don't have a good grasp on is when you do these jurisdictional determinations, if there's a specific flow regime you have to hit, like a time of year. Is spring a bad time? Is it preferred to do it in summer? That I don't know. And they'll, they'll tell us probably when they want to see this jurisdictional determination done. We can do that whenever it is.
Maybe the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah.
Correct, okay, okay.
We can turn it around as quickly as we can and get the work done as soon as they say go. Now, it's probably going to sit with them for a little bit. I've done work with the Army Corps. It sits for a little bit. So, is it possible it sits for two to three months? Yeah, probably, pretty likely. But I hope by fall, we have a very good understanding of how we want to proceed here, and I can come back and share with you and say, look, this is a great option. Let's go this route, or this is not cost-effective. We need to look at somewhere else to go here. But my, my goal is to not punt. I'm engineer number four. I don't want to punt anymore. Let's, let's get this right for the people that live over here. So.
Mr. Shaw, I'd like to bring up a couple of points that Mr. Headed alluded to regarding the trees and markers with the project in general. Can you speak to those?
I, I don't know of the markers. I'm sure he's got some pictures of it. I'd love to see them. I've had conversations with Sajard, the owner of the property. They have some bigger visions back there, I'll say, that they've shared with me about improving that area, replanting trees, making that a great honoring veterans-type location. I think some of, maybe the, the things that maybe Anthony thinks is that's going to stay in its current state. I get no indications from them that they want to do that. So...
But again, I digress to say, were we part of the trees coming down?
Of course, with the project, sure.
Yeah, and the markers?
The markers, I'll have to go back and look. I, my apologies, I don't know that. But obviously, if they were disturbed with the project, sure, that's on us, of course.
Thank you.
And I can get that addressed. I would, if I had known that they were thrown around, I would have for sure done something. I didn't know that. I'll make sure that it's addressed properly.
Other questions for Mr. Shaw?
Yes, Mr. Shaw. You and I have talked about this project in the past, you know, but could you give an update on Mr. Headed's concern regarding public input, whether it's input already received, whether there will be additional opportunities for public comment?
So, yes. So, I think once we do the jurisdictional determination and we have that defined path moving forward, that's where Deputy Director Eric Barnes and I would like to engage and talk to the property organist, like, okay, this is the path going forward. This is what to expect. I don't think because we knew exactly for that just yet, we wanted to get people together and talk about it. Let's, let's know what exactly it is that we can do and want to do. Talk about that project with them so that they have the best information. So, that's coming down the road.
Other questions for members of council? Hearing now, we have ordinance number forty-eight-two thousand twenty-five for consideration, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce by title only the ordinance number forty-eight dash twenty-twenty-five, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to approve the amendment to the city's agreement with Fishback to provide additional professional engineering services for the Eldon Ditch watershed Phase Three project, increasing the proposal amount by four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, appropriating funds therefore. I move for passage of ordinance number forty-eight dash twenty-twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second. Motion and second to approve ordinance number forty-eight-two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. An ordinance number forty-eight-two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number nine, Lucas County Commissioners, Everbridge Mass Notification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, back in two thousand and thirteen, Lucas County Commissioners had gotten together and wanted to put together a wireless alert system for all members of Lucas County. That system went into place in early two thousand and fourteen, and us, as the city of Slovenia began our participation in that alert notification system. In September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, I've provided the ordinance there. So, we're going on eleven years of the notification system. Their current system is called WENS. It's called Wireless Emergency Notification System. And that system is being retired at the end of this month, April third. All that means is it's just the powering system of the notification system is being retired for one, and a new, a new product is coming onboard. They're using Everbridge. And so, that's the, that's the product that they want to use to power this notification system moving forward. Us, as a member of the alert notification system, they presented us with a new memorandum of understanding agreement for that. And that's enclosed in your, in your council packet. It's thirty-two hundred dollars is our estimated participation. That's an up-to amount. It's based on the number of members that participate in the system. To give you an idea of what last year's invoice was, was in two thousand and twenty-four, it was two thousand and eighteen dollars and fifty cents. So, it looks to be an increase to use this new, new system. But with it, Chief Miller and I have had a couple of encounters with it and what some of the cool things are with it. You can do internal communications with departments. So, for example, if chief has an overtime that comes up, you can use internal communications with that system and literally in ten minutes know who your, who your people are that are available for an overtime event, which is a lot longer, if I understand it now. It can take hours at times to work through that. So, pretty cool. So, the total cost of the notification system, I have it in the letters, fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. Our nine-one-one participation in that covers the first twenty-five thousand of that. The balance of that is spread among its members, and that's how the thirty-two hundred dollars is, is come up with. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on the alert notification system.
Questions for Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw, how do you feel it's been effective since its implementation?
I think from a countywide standpoint, great. You know, last Wednesday night, when storms rolled through at eleven nineteen, I got a text message on my phone that told me severe weather watch has been issued for my, my area. Awesome. That's pretty cool. I was asleep, but.
I didn't see it, but maybe they notified you. It's pretty cool.
I was, my wife, I was asleep. My wife was awake. Locally, we've underutilized it by every stretch of the imagination. We've had it. It's existed. I think we've underperformed in using it locally to provide water notices on boil advisories. I think we, the way that the system is set up, it's geographic system-based. You can literally go into the portal. You can highlight a street and select that, and then boom, you can type in the notification that you want those specific residents to receive. That's really powerful when it comes to boil advisories and water things, and we have not utilized that system. My full intention is to change that and not inundate people, right? We don't want to give useless, you know, information, but make it pertinent, emergency, not really emergency-related because they handle those, but important information that our residents need to see at a specific location that they need to see it to. And I have Chief Miller is excited about her capabilities with it as well. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Stout.
Mr. Shaw, I know I've heard over the last couple of months with, in regards to the Main Street work, some concerns about people's ability to know when things are happening that are important to them. And I know we are already following sort of the state requirements and making sure we mail out to the, any residences for different projects. we mail out to the residences for different projects that are happening that would impact them. I know we're also posting on the website and on Facebook. Is there any intention of using this system as another means of communicating?
Of course, of course. I want to be really careful with how it's message, though, too. If it's, you know, hey, there's an event, I think sometimes if you hit people too much with that type of, they will stop looking at it. And that's not the idea here. We want to make sure it's real specific, it's real pertinent, and it's hitting a target group. So that's something that Chief and I will work together on to make sure we're doing that. But, yeah, I think to your point, those are great opportunities. Our road is closed. Let's tell them, you know, a gas line crossing has to open cut a road for some reason to do some emergency repair. Being able to tell everybody on Woodrow three weeks ago that a gas crossing was going to happen would have been awesome. We could have done that literally in five minutes, hit send, and boom, everybody on that street knows why their road is closed because of a gas main work. That's real powerful stuff for us.
Thank you.
And just to follow up, and you and the chief will be the ones that make these determinations? Is that correct?
We'll be the ones making the determinations, but we both will have different administrators that will make sure that we have access to the system. So for example, on my end, at 2:00 in the morning, there's a water main break on Glenn Bay. You know, Sean will have that capability to jump into the system, alert those people. They may be sleeping, but, you know, at the very least, you can say, hey, the city sent me a text message at 2:36 in the morning about my water main break. So we've got certain administrators who want to have those privileges, too.
Great. So when Mr. Hanam's having a bake sale, that's not what's going to be on his notices? Is that what you're telling me?
Depends what he's baking.
It would warn him, but fair enough.
That's only if the residents sign up.
Exactly. Excellent point. It's an opt-in thing. It's not, everybody gets this, you have to sign in and opt-in. At your desks, I think the chief provided a copy of the QR code. You can scan if you're not included in that. It's a very simple process to go ahead and sign up. We're working on distributing that if approved to make sure all of our residents can opt-in. It'll be on our website, it'll be on Facebook, all those good places.
Signed up? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. Sent out with the water bill? Possible?
Yeah, we can absolutely do that, too. Sure.
If it's approved, we're also looking at the expos this weekend. Again, if they hand out our officers, the handouts, they're available to answer questions and hopefully residents sign up.
Since the chief is speaking, is there anything you'd like to add, Mr. Shaw?
It's a very robust system, and it's kind of up to us how we want to tailor it for our community. So you have the set things that you can do, and then you can kind of branch out. For us internally, it's going to be, I think, pretty amazing what we can do with it. I know they have told us that Slovenia Township Fire has already been doing some testing on it for them on the internal side for callbacks, and they've had pretty good response to it. So we're looking forward to kind of bringing us into the next century.
Thank you.
We're getting WENS notices. Will we have to sign up again?
Oh, you roll right in. That's correct. We've done, in anticipation hopefully of an approval. Been a lot of behind-the-scenes with Chief Miller and with the Lucas County EMA to roll some data over so that we're not caught flat-footed in the transition.
Any other questions for Mr. Shaw? Hearing none, we have ordinance number 49-2025, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 49-2025. All members of council have received it in advance. I will read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with the Lucas County Emergency Management Agency for the city of Slovenia's participation in the Lucas County Alert System, appropriating funds therefore in an amount not to exceed $3,200. I move passage of ordinance number 49-2025 as an emergency measure.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve ordinance number 49-2025 as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Ordinance number 49-2025 is approved as an emergency measure, and I would encourage everybody to sign up for this, for the Lucas County Alert System. That would be very helpful for all of us and for any citizens who want to remain informed on important things that are going on right around their home and in our community more broadly. So thank you for that effort, Chief and Mr. Shaw. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Moving on to agenda item number 10, which is ordinance number 50-2025 for the Lucas County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an unusual agreement. I don't think we've ever done one of these before, but I don't think we've ever had this issue come up before. There was an unhappy defendant that filed some various writs of mandamus and prohibition in the Ohio Supreme Court against both court personnel and prosecutor's office personnel due to a potential conflict of interest. The county prosecutor's office has offered to represent the court personnel at no charge, and our insurance company will be handling the representation of the prosecutor's office personnel. So the county is just requesting that this formal agreement be approved. I recommend its approval, and hopefully we'll just, I'm not concerned with any of the...
Substance.
Substance of the writs that were filed, so I recommend its approval.
Any questions for Ms. Brining? Hearing none, we have ordinance number 50-2025 for consideration, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 50-2025, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with the Lucas County Board of Commissioners. I move passage of ordinance number 50-2025 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance number 50-2025 as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. An ordinance number 50-2025 is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number 11. This is an SUP number one of the year, 2025. Mr. Hanam? Well, hold on, before you do that, we probably need a little bit of explanation. Mr. Shaw, do you have a, just a quick verbal explanation on this?
On the special use permit, sure. I don't know of where this church is specifically located. I did a look a couple days ago if I could find them. I don't know if it's local, if this is new, or what it is, but they're asking for two suites in the, I call it the Major Magics Plaza at 5800 for church purposes. It's B4 zoning in there, but the use as a church is a special use according to our zoning code. That's the reason you guys are seeing it tonight, for referral of a planning commission to take a further review of that.
Questions for Mr. Shaw?
Any idea what it says? It's M and N. Do you know which?
I don't.
I think it's a, it's insane. Isn't it, you know, that Mediterranean restaurant, I think it is.
Yeah. The one question I, I guess the one question I have is it's already on the, it's already on the real estate documents, is this place labeled as, so I'm assuming they've already rented that space?
Yeah. Or it won't happen.
Right.
It'll be nice to have the planning commission look at this.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we refer application number SUP-1-2025 to the planning commission for its review and recommendation.
Okay.
A motion and a second to refer this Sillian ordinance amendment, SUP-1-2025, to the planning commission for review and recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. That's the end of our regular agenda. I know there's another individual that's here this evening. I know the fourth estate's here, but Sharon's always here. Just wanted to make sure, did you have, just observing?
I'm just here to hear.
Okay, just wanted to make, just wanted to make sure you didn't want to have an opportunity to speak, so.
No, thank you.
Nope, sure. Happy to do it. Thank you very much.